Ready to go? All right. Good evening, everybody. It's 7:15 PM on October 26, 2022, and I call the Committee of the Hall to order. We'll start with the roll call.
Ellis?
Yeah.
Francie?
Yeah.
Gaken? Catchman?
Here.
Lawrence?
Here.
Mackey?
Here.
Morrison?
Here.
Gerchini?
Here.
Ross?
Here.
Shaw?
Here.
Seedorf?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Shae?
Here.
Thank you.
And we don't have any guest speakers tonight, so I will move over to department head reports. So there are any department heads with updates tonight. It would be.
Yeah, it must've got overlooked because we had just scheduled for last meeting, and then that was canceled. So it probably was my fault that it didn't get written down here on the agenda for tonight. So yes, you were, you were, you are our guest speakers for tonight.
Why don't we, why don't we go ahead and do it?
Yes.
Yeah, it's a good night to do it.
Is 15 minutes okay? Can you squeeze it in? Okay, let's do it then. There's a podium with a microphone right there. We'll see if we can get the microphone.
I'm always nervous when people put a microphone in front of me. I might say something that I should. Anyway, I'm Mike Norton. I'm the manager of the Graves Harbor Conservation District. I also happen to manage the Pacific County, or the Pacific Conservation District also. But, so districts have, they're not just countywide. We have district boundaries. And cities, municipalities have the option to opt in or opt out of district boundaries. And a number of years ago, the city of Aberdeen opted out. This is like decades ago. About five years ago, I came with a, we came and tried to give information about the Conservation District at that point in time. And gave the option for the city of Aberdeen to join the district boundary. And I honestly can't remember why it didn't happen, but it didn't happen. And it's, and I just want to say that the city can opt in, and they can opt out also at any point in time. It's just a matter of a procedure that Alexander Burke, my communications outreach coordinator, is handing out right now. We've had a number of citizens that have come to our five-year long-range plan, and they have, they're from the city of Aberdeen, and they have expressed some interest in engaging with the district with a couple of number of issues around small farm, urban farming, but also around erosion and stormwater issues. But we've had to tell them that we cannot work in the city limits of Aberdeen unless we have an MOU with the city on certain issues. Now, here in the district boundary, we work with those landowners. The other positive is, is that, positives if you're with the district in the boundary is that the citizens can vote on the elections for our supervisors, the ones that set our resource concerns. Also, citizens then who are landowners will be able to run, to be a supervisor if they met the criteria, which all we have to do is have three natural resource producers on the board, and we have to have three landowners out of the five. So there's lots of room for some, if the city of Aberdeen was the district boundary, citizens could actually get more involved. The downside is, and I'm just, I always liked when I'm doing, ever this, ever doing this talk, I like to say what the downside is. Is, there's only one. Is that if the county commissioners ever decided there was a, something called a rates and charges, which ultimately is a tax per parcel, if they ever chose to do that, like a $5 per parcel fee, that would go against also all the landowners in the city of Aberdeen. The maximum in the state of Washington for this size of population is a total of $10 per parcel, if that ever happened. But also, the city also has the option, if that ever happened and they chose not to be involved anymore, they can opt out. I highly recommend they gauge their citizenry to decide that, but those are just the facts of the pros and cons. We are voluntary incentive-based. You're non-regulatory. So if a landowner doesn't want to work with us, we don't work with them. We also have the option not to work with the landowner if we, you know, for whatever reason. But we try to bring best management practices on natural resources on citizens' property. Now, we also work in education, so Alexander's going to speak real quick on that. That's all I'm going to say at this point. At the end, we'd like, if you guys wanted to question-answer, you might be getting into it. Here's Alexander, and then after that will be David Marcel, my assistant manager.
Well, good evening, everybody. My name's Alexander. I'm the Education Outreach Coordinator for both Pacific and Graves Harbor Conservation Districts. And in terms of education, we have a lot of great programs going in Pacific County with all of our cities in our district boundary. But also, I obviously being in the city of Aberdeen, I was actually here earlier today to do education at Aberdeen High School, and that is something that I would like to continue doing because as of right now, I'm only able to do so under the capacity of the Graves Harbor Stream Team, which is housed under the Graves Harbor Conservation District because the Stream Team does have a contract with the city of Aberdeen. But in order to expand those educational events, whether that be through, today was a career day, telling kids about what potential opportunities they have in the future, but also, a lot of what we want to focus on is to get students' hands dirty, get them out in the, in the field, learn what forestry is, learn about salmon, learn about the salmon lifecycle and what restoration is like. And to expand that program is really important for us because right now, we only have a certain amount of dollars through the Stream Team, which we can also do more in Aberdeen and hope to do more as well. But that is really one of the major things that we want to do is just get our, get our students involved. And so that's something that is a big goal for us. We're working on trying to get the Envirothon program. If you guys have heard about that, it is a, basically, the way we like to describe it is athletes for natural resources. So getting kids an opportunity to compete with other schools on things like forestry, aquaculture, soils, wildlife, and other special issues. And it's a state-level competition, and eventually, students would be able to actually be competing for scholarship dollars. And so that's another thing that we would love to bring to Aberdeen High School as well. So as of right now, under the capacity of the Conservation District, we can't work too closely with the schools, of course, because we're, Aberdeen is in our city boundary, or in our district boundary, rather. So that's just another opportunity that we can afford the students in the city of Aberdeen as well. So in, for the sake of brevity, I will cut it there and give it up to David.
Hey, how's it going? I live here in Aberdeen, off B Street. There's a couple of issues, natural resources related, believe it or not, right? Water, forests, we all live around those things. I've been on a couple of site visits right now where the most I can do is basically let folks know, here's some links and resources for you to fix this yourself. They need people with money, grant writers, and that's what I pride myself on, bringing millions of dollars to the communities I live in work. That money's going to go to various Conservation Districts throughout the state unless we competitively write those grants and get them here. So I guess my plea to the council is kind of, you know, join the district so I can go out there and do something for folks on Wisika River with eroding properties, so I can work with folks on their stormwater management projects in their front and backyards. Those are things that are going to bring capacity and money to the council and the Natural Resource Department. Frankly, the city just doesn't have and wouldn't expect them to. There's not a lot of funding. I just want to point out again, Mike said non-regulatory, voluntary, incentive-based. It's a long word for, if you have a problem, we go to your property. We stick to that problem. We're not in people's business looking at wells or structures they have non-permitted. I'm really there to focus on a solution. I don't know what else, more to say, but we just definitely want to get the city opted in. That is a voluntary nature of Conservation Districts. It's an opt-in situation. And so there's a form in front of you with six or seven steps on it. Those are all in our, the ball's in our court to do a lot of the paper shuffling. But basically, with a $5 check to Secretary of State and going through that process, we can get Aberdeen in the district. I can actually follow through on some of those site visits, start writing the grants, get money. Elephant in the Room, there's a little project maybe going on on the North Shore, and there's going to be a lot of tertiary things that are going to be needed to make that project successful. I think the district would be a great spot to like get some grant money to help fund those areas. So that being said, you have a way to get ahold of us there. Alexander is our great outreach education coordinator. You know, the projects with landowners is one thing, the education for the next generations is another. So yeah, just thanks for your time, and I hope you guys consider opting in the district. We have, I had two cities, just FYI, in Pacific County join in the last few months because they see the value in these things, the capacity building we bring. So if you have any questions on that specifically, you can reach out to me, and I'll leave everyone with a card tonight. So thank you all for being a great council, and thanks for the time to talk. Appreciate it.
And we'll pay for the pie calls.
Thank you so much, and I really appreciate you being proactive and sharing this with the council tonight. I really, like I said, appreciate your comments. And I, I know you left a little bit of time open for council questions, so I'll open up to the council. Are there any questions tonight?
So if the city does not opt in, what prevents you, if anything, from working with a landowner in the city limits of Aberdeen or on a project in the city?
So we have done projects with the city of Aberdeen before, specifically around your forestry department. You had an MOA to work on that. So we helped the city in that capacity. But when it comes to an individual landowner, we're not allowed to do that.
Well, why not?
Because they're not in the district boundary. It's just, it's a jurisdictional issue that we take seriously at the state. This is a, a burden or a problem that has been existing since the district was created in 1941. Originally, it was the Elma Oakville Conservation District, and that was the area the operator ran there. And then it slowly expanded out. And I, if you guys want to know in the future, I can send you the evolution of the district boundary since then. But we are bound by rules under RCW 8908 of where we can and cannot work and how we work. And so we would need to be, have the landowner be in the district boundary to do opt-in or that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for being here tonight. I thought the feedback. A few years ago, I managed a small urban farm and attended some conservation meetings, hoping to become part of, to be able to take advantage of all that you offer.
Did you remember our five-year long-range plan meeting?
Yeah.
That, that's where I remember you from.
I know, we're a community that's touched by a lot of water, whether it's rivers or floodings. And I am aware that there are many homeowners, property owners that did really benefit from what you have to offer. Just talked to a fellow council member tonight about a tansy deadwood I spotted on somebody's yard. And yes, we've got knxious needs too. So you've given us some good information to talk about, and thanks again for being here.
Happy to be here. Wanted, and ultimately, like I said, the voluntary part of this, we truly take that to heart. So we're here to offer what we're doing for the city of Aberdeen. But ultimately, if you guys decide that it's not the direction you want to go in, we'll come back in eleven, five, you know, so odd years again, and we'll offer it again. And we will keep doing what we do. We have a lot of active projects. We brought in, in grant writing, we usually bring in about $2.5 million a year and work around the rest of the county. And stormwater and a lot of the issues around urban areas, we have not been able to bring into this county very much, even though there's a lot of money out there, mainly because the, the cities of Westport, Hoquam, and Aberdeen and Ocean Shores are not in the district boundary. So we have not put a lot of effort in that direction. And I remember when you were there, and you had brought up urban farming, and we, we can't do it unless, in fact, we just came back from a conference that there's a lot of money to do, to teach kids how to do farming in schools and set up farm systems there. But we can't do that unless we have the ability to do that. So we're just offering up our services. We're not in our business to get rich. We actually do this to, because we believe in it and we like doing it. It's a happy life for us to do this job and to work with people. We're not one of the state agencies. We're not there to look and hammer down anybody, and there is a place for that. I'm not saying there isn't. But that's, that's not our, what we do. We're conservations, not preservationists, and we're not regulatory agencies. Are there any other questions? I'd be more than happy to answer it. Or we have websites and Facebook pages too.
I was just curious what kind of projects you might be working on. Are you guys still doing like New Zealand fencing and?
Yes, we do all the, I'm going to let you go to second. Yeah, all the terrestrial ag-type stuff, the traditional ag stuff, we do that. We work with shellfish farmers. We do forest management plans. We do about 30 of them a year between the two counties because our foresters work in both. We're on a bunch of policy programs also. We do a lot of the salmon, I'm going to let David talk about that, but we do a lot of salmon recovery projects. Anything natural resources, if somebody directs us in that direction, we can do it.
So there, there was like several overwintering ponds created some years ago. Are you guys maintaining those? Are still working with them or?
I, I would have to know what those ponds specifically are because there's other entities that are doing those kind of things.
Oh, I see, okay.
But I don't know if you guys have heard of the, the Hope, I'm going to let David talk about the Hoquam project, restoration project we did recently. That was funded by us and guided by us. And we worked with the J. Harris Basin Trust for that. But we were the lion's share of the people doing the work. And we have also done a lower SATS-up work down in Pacific County. We did both Brew Creek projects, over 16.9 square miles of salmon. The North Cove project, the erosion issue, were the ones that brought the money to that program and helped do the permitting for it. So there are some large projects we've been involved with. But there's also, there's a whole slew of small things all the way down to $5,000, like helping out a redundancy chemigation valve for cranberry cars. They were going to be shut down because the state was going to make it so you were required to have it. A lot of cranberry cars didn't have the money, so we came in and held out with all that money. So it just depends on whatever the flavor or the specific problem at the time, we do it. And we like to.
Yeah, just worth mentioning too is we're helping the city check that stormwater outreach box right now. We house the Graves Harbor Stream Team, which gets funding from the city to check that box. $15,000 is what we're getting in grants. We're rewriting that every year. There's a lot more out there to be had for this city than $15,000 for that stormwater. So it's, it's what we're actively doing, but what we also want to do. Like Mike said, the middle for Hoquam, yeah, it's Hoquam, but it's all the, you know, Aberdeen water should be share those. Yeah, we restored, you know, hundreds of acres of wetlands and stuff. But we're also pretty, pretty prideful to say we got to hire Brumfield to do that, you know? Three local jobs, which went to local businesses. After hours, I was there with them celebrating the job well done. So I saw the money go into the community. Those are just, you know, that's what we're actively doing. But I just want to end on what could be, and that's my personal community up there on B Street. There's a lot of stormwater infrastructure that we're an eligible entity and capacity builder to go get those dollars and do those things. So I'd really harp on that because I see that as our acute future, but also the beautification committees in town. You know, let's just swap a lot of these flowers I'm seeing for native pollinators. All of a sudden, they're paid for. They look beautiful, and they're functioning for a natural resource benefit, right?
With my, my.
Yeah, so there's all these things I'm seeing as a citizen here, and I go to South Bend office to work, and I go to our Elma office to work, and I'm like, dang, I want to bring some of those things here. So yeah, I, I, I know that.
We're not good-looking, but we're really to make a difference.
Hey, thank you, you guys.
Thank you. Can you leave a few of your business cards, like you said, in the back?
For sure.
Okay.
And we're going to step out because we know you guys have a business.
You want to say all night? Okay, thank you. I'm going to follow up with the, with the city on this and, and see if we can get something over to council to take a look at formally. Yeah. Thank you. All right, okay. So next up is department head updates. Do you have any department heads with updates tonight?
Thank you. I have submitted a report to all of you as of last Friday, so you all should have received that. And I wanted to follow up on a couple items or to announce a couple items to you. IT has sent an email to all of you. We do have a transition happening, so please check your emails. It's pretty important. We have some instructions there for you. If you have any questions at all, please let me know. I'm happy to help. And there has been, I think in the past, from what I understand, it's kind of a, I just wanted to check with all of you. We have moved the, that the, the council decides on whether or not to move the meeting on the 23rd to the 22nd. I just wanted to put that on your, place on your, on your radar for you if you want to decide that in the future. Other than that, I am happy to answer any questions that you might have. I also have submitted a memo to you regarding museum options as well. So if you have any questions, please let me know. I'll answer them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I also have it on my radar to handle the meeting tonight for council consideration.
Yep. All right. Other department head updates? I don't see anybody rushing to the camera or to the microphone. Okay. Mayor's report. I won't skip you this time.
I, I'll be real brief. I made it just a quick list here. Some of the things I took part in since last council meeting. I did both radio stations, which is pretty normal on the Thursday morning after council. Conducted interviews for new Unigospel Mission Director. And then hired a new director. That'll be announced in probably another week. Was involved in union negotiations, RFA planning, more union negotiations, CAP Board, Transit Board, and today, or yesterday, fire chief interviews. So we'll be announcing the results of that in probably within a month. So that's since last council meeting. And some of those things might be once a month, but usually then there's something else during that time. So it keeps me pretty busy. Well, that's all.
Thanks, Mayor Shae. And do we have any non-standing committee reports tonight? Councilwoman Zerr.
Thank you. So on Thursday, October 13th, I attended our RFA planning committee, and we were able to review and approve five sections of our proposed plans. Only five more to go. So it was a good productive meeting. And then on Thursday, October 20th, I attended the Council of Governments. And they have put out an RFP for help with the upcoming Brownsville grant. They submitted three applications for WASH grants. And there's a transportation survey on the Graves Harbor Council of Government's webpage. And we're encouraging everyone on the council or anyone in the community to take a look at that and take the survey. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Other updates?
Thank you. So we had a support board meeting recently, and I learned about the successful and fun murder mystery solved in the evening, October 22nd. This probably won't show up in the public safety report, but the mystery of who murdered the victim was solved. I hear there's a virtual murder mystery evening being considered, so stand by for that. And I have attended a number of webinars. One adapting to a changing climate for state and local officials. The Office of the J. Harris Basin, Future of Flooding in the Harbor, and MRSC webinar on community engagement strategy. Graves Harbor Public Health, a housing stakeholder meeting. And the county council meeting last Tuesday where they took action on cold weather shelter proposals. So being a presence out and about and trying to represent board three and being instead of everything as best I can. Thank you.
Any other council updates? Seeing none, I will adjourn the Committee of the Hall meeting and hand things over to Mayor Shae.
Thank you. This is Mayor Shae. It's Wednesday, October 26, 2022, at 7:40. And I will call the Aberdeen City Council meeting to order. Deputy City Clerk, will you take a roll call, please?
Ellis?
Yeah.
Francie?
Yeah.
Gaken? Catchman?
Here.
Lawrence?
Here.
Mackey?
Here.
Morrison?
Here.
Gerchini?
Here.
Ross?
Here.
Shaw?
Here.
Seedorf?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Shave?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Shave, I would make a motion to excuse council member Gaken tonight. Second?
Thank you. Motion was made seconded to excuse council member Gaken. Was there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the flag salute. And after we, we stand for the flag salute, would everybody remain standing for a moment of silence? For Jamie Walsh, please. Violet Morrison, will you lead us in the flag salute?
Point of allegiance to the flag of the United States.
United States and America.
Thank you. Would you remain standing for one more moment of silence for late council member Alice Phelps? Thank you.
Mayor Shave, I move we approve the minutes from the previous meeting?
Motion was made seconded to approve the minutes of the previous meeting. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Move on to additions or deletions. Are there any additions or deletions? Seeing none, we'll move right along to public comments on agenda items. Are there any comments on agenda items? Okay. We will move forward with the finance committee. Committee chair report from council member Ellis.
Thank you, Mayor. The finance committee has received me. And we have one report in progress. We talked about how at the next meeting, November 9th, we'll be looking at the 2023 proposed budget. And council members will be receiving packet the Friday before. I think the public can access that as well via online to get a look at the first proposal. So moving into our, our reports. First up is approval of expenditures. I move we approve expenditures?
No.
Motion was made seconded to approve the expenditures and payroll. Is there any discussion? Deputy city clerk, will you take a roll call, vote please?
A motion to approve accounts payable of the total amount of $638,417.29 and payroll in the total amount of $91,848.53. Check numbers 25627 through 25638, 79228 through 79402. And wires 1401 through 1409 and 1411 and 1412. Ellis?
Yes.
Francie?
Yes.
Catchman?
Yes.
Lawrence?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Archini?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Cedar?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Motion approved, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay, moving along to a report from finance and the IT support services recommending that the council authorize the mayor to sign amendment number six with Next Level Networks LLC extending their contracts until the desktop support position is filled. I move we adopt this report.
I second it.
Motion was made and seconded to adopt this report. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Under discussion?
So this is extending the contract one more time, hopefully the last time. There is a successful candidate for the IT position being processed. And as soon as they start, then we can end this contract.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to public works, committee chair report, council member Shaw.
Thank you, Mayor. As you can see, public works doesn't have any action items on the agenda tonight. But yesterday, we used our time widely when we met and talked about a laundry list of items, including traffic on Think of Me Hill, investment in our watershed, an update on the Fry Creek pump station project. Where the fish window ends the 31st, but we'll be seeking an extension to continue work. We talked about the Farview cover replacement, which when they bring that back online, it might result in a slight more noticeable chlorination in the water for a short time. We talked about the bulk hypo project down at the wastewater treatment plant. Tide gauges around about the firing range, nuisance ordinance and rain cover at bus stops under the safer routes to schools. And Cascade natural gas project where we're going to reach out and try and get a little more clarity on their emergency procedures during a natural event. And finally, in my role as our representative on the flood authority, I want to bring to everyone's attention that there is a web training on November 2nd that I've asked public works staff to share out more widely if they can on how to maximize your access to flood warning and other tools during heavy rain events. So that's my committee chair report, and that's everything from public works.
I also understand that we are very close to, if not there, at the bulk hypo project at the drinking water.
It was, yes, it was delayed. Yeah, I think I misspoke. But I think it was delayed for quite a while because of supply issues. And so finally, the computer board or whatever it is they need is, is on its way so they can, they'll have everything they need to finally get that done. And it's been, it's a very, you know, it's been on the list for quite a long time, but mostly they were just waiting for that final piece of, very expensive to get all the computer chips they needed.
I bring that up because that project is something I've been pushing since the 90s, I think. It seems like.
We call it bulk hypo, but in the, if I'm saying it right, and I hope somebody interrupts me if I'm incorrect, is this is going to improve safety. Instead of highly explosive chlorination of our system, we'll have a safer chlorination process.
Yeah, they won't be using chlorine gas at all. So that's a big plus. Okay, thank you. Moving on to public safety, council chair report or committee chair report, council member Ross.
Thank you, Mayor. Our public safety committee met this evening at 6:30 and we do not have anything on the agenda. So I have just two quick reports from each department. Beginning with the City of Aberdeen Fire Department, the holiday season is approaching and the fire department will be sending out holiday safety information in upcoming water bills. Also, members of the fire department attended the Washington State Association of Fire Marshals conferences last week. And attendees attended valuable training in aspects of fire investigation, fire prevention and plan review, as well as community risk reduction. And from the police department. Under personnel, so we have lateral officers, Tarnowski and Shaw started field training in the last week. They will be on solo patrol by mid-February. We have a total of three officers in field training with one officer in the basic academy. We are down three officers with the fourth retiring in the next three months. We have over 10 applicants for entry level police officers who have applied online and will be moving forward with the written soon. The activity report for the past 30 days shows a total of 2,579 calls. This is still tracking at 11% above last year's call load. Aberdeen police officers have responded to 89 overdoses so far this year. That's up 43% from last year. We are having the written sergeant's exam Thursday evening for 12 hopeful sergeant candidates. The top 10 passing scores move on to the assessment center next week. The last sergeant test was in October of 2020. VIPs, along with Chief Green, attended the Graves Harbor Volunteer Fair last Saturday recruiting for the program. The volunteers, the VIPs volunteer thousands of hours a year for us and are an invaluable resource for our community. Interested candidates should contact Lieutenant Steve Timmons at 360-533-3180. And finally, this Saturday is the downtown Aberdeen trick or treat event. Stop by the Aberdeen Police Department for some treats. No tricks between noon and 2:00 PM. And that's it for public safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Any special agenda items? No?
None tonight.
Okay. We'll move on then to public comments. Anyone in the audience have any comments they want to make on any subject? They please state your name and ward and you have three minutes.
We have homeless committee that was formed in the last year or so. Who's on that? Who chairs it? Were you notified about the meeting that was being had at the health department discussing the cold weather shelter being?
No.
We received word early yesterday morning that it was posted late the night before that they had met at the public health department to discuss proposed locations for cold weather shelter and the funding that they're going to be giving to different entities who have applied to host that discenter. Some of you probably know, we own the driving school that's on Broadway and Third Street. We had to move that business from downtown Aberdeen because it's a continual problems that we've had with this population. And we've got several different things going on within our community and our county that are helping people. There's some people that want more help than others. Family Promise is a great model of a program. They're literally not even a block away from us. We've never had a problem with them. But the population that doesn't want to be housed, doesn't want to follow the law, that wants to do drugs and be sheltered at night when the weather gets bad, have sex in front of the church, dedicate in the mailbox, do all those things, is now being proposed to be put in a church with whose parking lot we share. It actually belongs to the property that we're renting and the church leases parking space there. And our community development director was the only person from the city of Aberdeen at this discussion, which is dissimilar. Is she in tonight? I don't see her name on there. We've tried to work with the city. We've talked to the former police chief. We've talked with Mayor Shave. Their words are sympathetic, but your actions speak so much louder than your words. You can't put this homeless shelter that has very little oversight where people are allowed to do just about whatever they want, right next to a driving school, in a church, next to residences, a block from an elementary school, two or three blocks from a high school in St. Mary's. I don't know what people are thinking. I learned yesterday at the city or county commission meeting that in the last two years, this county has helped fund $1.031 million to help with the homeless problem. 430,000 of that has gone to CAP. And my mother and I met with the director of CAP in the last two weeks, it's been an hour and a half within. And he said, I'm not in the business of sheltering. We want to get people housed. So why are we giving them $430,000? They don't know. But this is a serious problem. The city has been sued twice by the entity that was given the grant, the, who made the proposal to put the shelter there, and that's who they chose. You're going to get sued by businesses who you are harming if you don't clean this up and stop moving it up into our neighborhood. I don't like to be nasty. I really don't. I feel like we've been diplomatic and really asked for solutions and proposed solutions, but we're not getting anywhere. So they plead with you. I think it's in the county commissioner's hands now, but you have a homeless committee. Don't leave them out of these crucial conversations. That's so negligent. Like, why even form a committee if you're not going to put them at the table?
Three minutes. Thank you.
I just would like to make one last suggestion. There is a video on YouTube with an interview from the mayor of Malibu, California. It's 36 minutes long and his name is Bruce Silverstein. They have made encampments illegal and are still under compliance with the restrictions of Martin versus Boise. And you can just talk to their city attorney and talk to that mayor. His name's Bruce Silverstein. He was mayor pro 10 at the time the interview was given. And they have solved these problems. We have a huge public health disaster on our waterfront now. And you need to find the people who are solving these problems in their cities that are under the same restrictions as we are and come up with solutions. If your city attorney just says, oh no, we can't do that because we're going to get sued, find a better attorney.
Okay, thank you.
Tara and I have the same brain, but we didn't share notes beforehand. So she, she pretty much discussed, you know, a lot of the things that I wanted to share with you. I just want to add that.
Can we have your name and ward, please?
Debbie Hotchkin.
Thank you.
I found out that a student of mine has a brain tumor. Within a couple of hours, I found out that Jake had been killed. A few hours after that, I found out that they were putting the cold weather shelter by our school. And this is something that we've been dealing with for five years. I talked to Eric about it. I said, Eric, don't put it downtown. It's going to harm the businesses. Everyone moved out of our building, you know, because they couldn't operate there anymore. And so we've tripled our expenses and moved out of the downtown area. They don't include people from Aberdeen when they make these decisions of where to put it. They, they're going to, they're going to award it to someone who sued the city, you know, twice. You know, I realized that we have a problem. And this is what we talked to Craig about. I said, Craig, we know we have a problem. He says, well, I'm not in the business of sheltering. I, you know, so I don't think he's very involved are, you know, with what to do about the population under the bridge. I heard that, you know, Tishuane proposed that we have two different campsites and that we leave them there for three or four months. And then we move them off to the next campsite so we can clean up the old campsite. And then we can just kind of share the burden between, you know, that population that is, you know, trying to do business wherever those two campsites could be. So my suggestion, you know, not to really, I'm hoping, this is what I'm hoping, is that, you know, we've had a homeless committee before. This problem seems to be, you know, it's kind of is a little bit beyond us. It's like we don't know what to do. I spent an hour talking to Debbie. She says, Debbie, we've looked for property everywhere. You know, we know that we can't have it, you know, by the businesses. We can't have it by a school. We can't have it, you know, by residences. But that's where it's being put. And when we talked, it's been an hour and a half talking to Craig. He said, I don't want to talk about location. You know, the location where he wants to put this proposed year-round shelter that, you know, low barrier shelter that he wants to do. One of them is directly behind our school and the old armory parking lot. The other one is kitty corset to our school food bank. I said, that's in our neighborhood, Craig. You know, and, and you know what happened, you know, with the cold weather shelter? That's the element that you're trying to help. And if you put it by our school, it damages us. You know, it damages the residents that are living in that area. It's not a solution. You know, if we can't come up with our own solution, we need, we spend a lot of money hiring people who are professional and figuring things out. Maybe we need to hire a professional, you know, that can come into the city and say, hey, this is what we can do about this situation. I know there are some people who feel like we have to have it in the city. It has to be within the city bounds. You know, we have to have it by the businesses. I don't believe that's true, you know, and, and I'm just begging. Begging, please, you know, don't do it to me again. I have a pie there at least. And we have to treat people better, you know, and I know all of you know the golden rule. And the golden rule is don't do to other people what you wouldn't want done to you. And if you wouldn't want that camp next to your house, don't put it next to mine.
Thank you, Debbie.
Patty Thomas, Ward 5. And what I have to say, I've really struggled with what to say, what to do or not. And what I have to say, I can't say it in three minutes because I'm not allowed. So what I'm going to show you is what I'm talking about and I would need one portion that I would like to let you know. This is, okay. This is, I did a public disclosure at Washington State Department of Transportation. And I'm going to read a letter. Communication is going to be on, been going on since March 29th with councilman member Ellis. With Brent Schilling, and he's the manager of the DOT here in Aberdeen. Okay, I'm going to read one letter as fast as I can now. And this was sent out to the, to the mayor, to two city council members and to Carter Coffee, to Rick Sanger and Clifford Whitehead. And this was his last response that I got at these at this point. Good day, everyone. Reaching back out since I haven't heard back from any of you on this matter, has the city made any further prounds on the grounding homeless population under the Chaylus River Bridge and along River Street? Since our last communication, the city has sent us bills to pay for cleanup on what you are now starting stating is the Washington State DOT camp, which you're willing to pay for under an agreement until housing or another location is provided within the city county. In the attachment is an interlocking agreement, Washington State DOT made with the city of Lacey to address and concern cost of cleanup. I would like to make an agreement with the city of Aberdeen. If this is not option, please let me know so I can find out other avenues. Other avenues address the concern by Chaylus River Bridge. Over the past several weeks, we have had numerous break-ins, are locked, stolen, a $2,000 welder. With our area being signed no trespassing, I'm asking if there can be more of a police presence in the area. We already have security on the site and that isn't enough to deal with the issue. If the people on DOT property are not willing to relocate, I would like to have them removed from our property. And to do so, we need the assistance of the Aberdeen police chief. One of the things that was addressed is councilman Ellis asked if, if he was able to put a hold on spreading rock and the if, if he was able to put a hold on spreading rock and the area underneath where the potty, porta-potty was until we have a better place to house the displacement without alternatives. The rock, they were preparing to put the rock between, on G Street, between State and, there's a portion of the overpass that goes overhead. That's DOT property. Everything to the right is the city. Everything to the left is the city, over towards the going building. The potty was put right there in that corner. That is all their area, and they were preparing to install rocks there. And Councilman Ellis, Councilmember Ellis requested that they not do that. They let the people stay there. There's a full letter that I have on all of this. There's, there's several letters and communications that went on there. I would like to know why. This is six months. Now it's almost seven. Why has nothing been done? And why has no one in the city addressed DOT about its concerns? I spoke with Brett personally. He said, "Patty, we're trying to work with the city." He said, "We, Liz came to us representing the city, asked us not to move those people, asked that we're trying to work with them. We've offered them a contract. We've offered them anything. I give no reply." And that's why the letter I read you where he, he stated, "We have not heard back from anyone yet."
That's kind. Thank you, Patty.
It's sad. It's really sad. It's, it's, it's very sad for the people of Aberdeen that our representation is not fulfilling an obligation. Because the obligation is to enforce the law and see to it that we are protected along with others, and especially our health. Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve Haywood, Ward 4. I wasn't going to say anything tonight, but a lot of things have been happening. Lost someone pretty special the other day. It hurts. But what really hurts is, well, same thing I've been complaining about. I see that you went to a meeting and discussed the traffic on Think Me Hill. What about Highway 6? 6th Street? Watched the guy go by today harassing me, as usual. Every day between 3:30, 4 o'clock. This time, there were two little girls standing out there. And the words he used, I wouldn't want my kids to hear that. Unexcusable. But do I see any police officers up there? None. Saturday morning, there was a race. Cars raced by. One of them stopped, decided to eat backup, see what this other guy was pulling over for. Think this other guy was calling the police. He was going to hassle him like I get hassled every day. The traffic, the speeders, the drugs, the garbage, and nothing is being done about it. Look across the street at the library, all of those grocery carts lined up. Oh, maybe you can't arrest them because one grocery cart doesn't work that much. All of those together has to be at least $1,500. Go arrest people. It's not their grocery carts. They're stole. The stuff in it is theirs. Dump it out and take the cart. I'm sorry. This is ridiculous. And I see Patty and them up here talking, and I see blank stares coming. "Oh, gosh, really? That's happening?" Yeah. And I'm sick of being lied to. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Carol Tumlin. I live in Ward 3 and am a business in Ward 5. I'd like to thank you all for being on the city council. It takes a lot of effort to assume that we're a position of councilmember. I realize many of you want to do what is best for the entire city and the taxpayers. What I would like to see is everyone working together to do what is best for the citizens, not focusing on your special interest. We have a homeless, drug addict, mentally ill explosion in Aberdeen. Why? Because we've allowed it. Three years ago, I spoke to our representative about the amount of people wandering in the streets. I told him that we need some industry. We need businesses. And he said, "Carol, according to Olympia, our industry is the homeless. We need to quit accepting this and do something about it." One other thing is I hope that you would consider addressing the information that Patty has brought forth. The public deserves acknowledgement that you, as city council members, have heard the concerns and will act on them.
Anyone else from the public have any, any comments?
Sylvia Dickerson, Ward 4. Not to belittle what went before me, but I feel bad coming after such an important topic. My reason for coming here is as a volunteer with R. Aberdeen, one of the nonprofits here in town. And last week, we put packets in all of your mailboxes with our current brochures and teaser for our new websites. Our newest brochure replaces artists on the map, murals on the map, critters on the map, and urban art on the map. It was a miracle that we got it all in one brochure, but we did. And so if you haven't had a chance to look at your brochures, do so. They are really beautiful and very informative. And in conjunction with them is our website, raverdeen.com. Websites were all redone this year. They're beautiful. They're easy to navigate, and they're full of information that we could not get in the brochure concerning every piece of public art in the city. So when you have some time, take a look. We're really proud of it, and we're very proud of Aberdeen. Thank you.
Thank you, Sylvia. I think I've had a lot of comments on, already on how nice a brochure that is.
Well, Rick Meyer and Deb Black, who are webmasters, both absolutely great about websites.
I think they've been well looked at already.
I am Mr. Sylvia. Sometimes known as Michael. I'm in Ward 4. And I said, "I'm the Bad News Guy." After much expense and much trouble, we find that we cannot use the vinyl reproduction of the historic transportation mural. So I had to come and fess it up that we failed. We could put it up, but it wouldn't be, I could put it up, but the art committee said no. It didn't come up to their standard. As an alternate, Jenny Fisher has agreed to repaint the mural. Now, this will be the third time she's done this mural. She will do it on wards in a building over the winter time. I want to make you aware of this change. Because of all the, we consider this building to be a building belonging to the city of Aberdeen. It's not a museum-owned building. But we will continue to come to the city for our commissions. But we would like to, we will reduce the size of the mural to accommodate the request of the museum board. Second thing is, we all lost a friend in Jamie Walsh. Jamie was in our meeting a couple of days ago, planning for next year's projects. I wasn't there, but I did hear a report. And one of the things that Jamie was most enthusiastic about was, and she's the founding director of R. Aberdeen, by the way, there is, 2020 did a survey. What is the most, what would you like to see first in Aberdeen to make it look better? And the report was light the bridge. We did the same report. We've got a second recap, one thing higher than that. But it was very close to light the bridge. I would like to suggest that there be some enthusiasm for lighting the bridge, both decorative and pedestrian, and that that lighting be dedicated to Jamie Walsh. Now, it is possible that we consider that this can be funded by the state, particularly if the council and the mayor get behind the project, request the money, and Public Works also comes on board. I think it will be a big addition to the city. Because when you come up out of that hill and you see that bridge all lit up, it will put a smile on everyone's face. I swear to God, it happens. My last comment is on the homeless problem. This is dangerous to all of you. I heard exactly the same comments by the same people 25 years ago in a different city. There is a solution. It's a very difficult solution. And all the true believers have to get together and come together to each one another. And it is solvable. You do not have to go out to Monterey, and which is the time where nobody, because homeless is a lot of the city. Can't feed them, can't do anything, no services in the city. But there are other ways of solving this problem. And I think that a little, a lot of great effort can solve the problem. We can, we, we have done it elsewhere. We were successful once, and it can be done. But it requires some really, really, really backbone on the part of municipal government. Because everybody will have a different idea. And once we all agree on how to solve it, that goes forward. I thank you for all the support you've given us. I had anticipated that on my birthday, my 80th birthday on December 7th, I would be really disassociating myself from R. Aberdeen. I don't know what I'm going to do now, but Jamie's gone. She was one of our linchpins. So that makes it very difficult because I have four brand-new board members. And one of our board members is in Japan. So there's just not that many left. But I thank you for all your help. I would love to have a discussion with this about the light of the bridge and how we can move forward with that project. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, members of council.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
I think Jerry Reeves, Ward 6, I think. Anyway, I know quite a few of you, but I don't know everyone. But I just want to point out, I believe there's a criminal activity on the damage to the buildings. And we, I would love to see a task force of some, some way, because we're all blaming all the homeless. But the kind of damage that's being done to these buildings now, it's professionals. I mean, they are, they're coming in, they're attacking the high voltage. And it's, it's really, there's something going on here. And I, you know, so I would love to see the PUD, the police department, and we would volunteer also to try to get to the bottom of this because there's something going on here. And we just, it just happened in Sears Building out at the mall. Busted into the vaults. High power. And they were, they're coming in there. They got walkie-talkies. I mean, there's something going on. And just as normal of call 911 when you see somebody messing around in the buildings, that's not what's going on here. So I would just say that we would be interested in helping in any way we can with that. It's, it's, it's just unusual. Thank you so much.
Okay, anyone else? See, now I'm going to move on to city council comment period. Is there anyone on the city council that's commented? Go ahead, Josh.
Well, I was helping up and had some time to actually do a cleanup around the Compass Rose on Monday. I was delightfully surprised that two parks workers came by and helped out and were cleaning up well, doing a thing cleaning up, and took our garbage bags.
Great. Anyone else? John?
Yes. I would like to make mention of also somebody else that passed away last week that was very important in my life, and also many other lives in Aberdeen at my age and several other ages. But it was Hampton Wines, the longtime Aberdeen High School band director that passed away at 97, just a couple of days ago. I had him for band, starting in the fifth grade, which I figured out tonight was 60 years ago. And in 1971, he took us on our first trip for six weeks, the whole band, 122, Europe. And we toured Europe for six weeks, and he did many other trips after that. And I would just like to recognize him for his accomplishments and the things he's done for Aberdeen also. Thank you.
Thank you, John, for bringing that up to us. Hampton Wines, great guy.
Yes.
Anyone else? Councilmember Ellis.
Thank you, Mary.
They already.
I too lost a dear soul and a person who's been very important to Aberdeen the past, the past week, the week-ish Ray Hotch. He was in his 90s, very active with the Aberdeen Lions, Habitat for Humanity, helping with homeless people, helping anyone who needed help. He was there. A real generous, dear man. And, and he's left yet more big shoes to fill for the rest of us. I wanted to speak to a bit of incomplete information that I heard that, yes, I was in communication with the DOT about the campers under the bridge and the bridge right of way.
Could you take your mask off so I could hear her? I've got my hearing aids up as high as possible. It's part of the procedure, too. None of us can understand with the mask on.
Please don't interrupt.
Maybe if you could, the microphone pulls her down. That'd help.
Let her speak.
So I was in touch with Brent Schilling from the DOT. I have been very concerned about the degree of theft and garbage and impact on the area businesses around the DOT right of way, as well as the downtown. And my, my hope was to, to actually coordinate something with DOT where the city would be supporting their requests to, to move the people from there right of way. But I also felt like it was important that, that there was an identified place for them to go and not just uproot them and then have them showing up en masse in business doorways and other inappropriate areas. So I, I have been trying to move the city and DOT towards a mutually workable solution and, and one that, that also recognizes that there are people down in that camp who, you know, they need to be treated with some dignity, too. So I, I, I have nothing to show for my efforts other than a whole lot of correspondence back and forth, trying to move, move us all to somewhere more positive. And I do hope that, that the city and DOT can And I do hope that the city and DOT can continue to work towards something that is much more positive than where we are now. So I'm a believer in personal responsibility. If people are committing crimes, there should be consequences. And I want to care about my city as does everybody else. We'll keep working on it. Thank you.
Anyone else from the council? Councilmember Morrison?
I guess I would just like some clarification. So I looked at that parcel of land. It's actually parcel number 010105000101. And we keep dubbing it the DOT camp, but it's actually owned by the City of Aberdeen. That's what the county website is showing, that that parcel of land is owned by the City of Aberdeen. So I'm just curious why we're putting this all on DOT.
The DOT has right-of-way over that land?
Under the, on the areas that are directly under the overpass, but the places where they're currently camping are city-owned.
No, I don't think so.
Well, then somebody should probably clarify that with the county assessor's office, because that's not what the website's showing. Additionally, I just want to go on the record and say that I find it absolutely applying that the county and the city would consider placing a shelter in a location, in the location that's being proposed. I was not privy to that meeting, nor any of the discussions that were had on that. I would hope the city would work in concert with the county and find a more appropriate location. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none? A council president, councilman?
Yeah, I would also like to agree with Councilmember Morrison that I do not think that that is a suitable location. I, let's see, okay, I guess an item of business that we should bring up tonight is our council meeting. That's on November 23rd. In the past, we've always moved it to the Tuesday prior to November 22nd. I make a motion that we move the 11:23 meeting to 11:22.
Motion is made seconded to move the Thanksgiving council meeting from the 23rd to the 22nd. Any discussion? Seeing none, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Most are carried. Thank you. Next item. Close session.
I think we can adjourn prior to that.
So that concludes everything, is your...
I move we adjourn. I second it.
Motion is made seconded to adjourn. If there's no objection, we are adjourned.
And council's going to recess or go into a closed session. There's a closed session. Thank you.
Yeah, we're gonna recess. Council's gonna recess to a closed session, discussing union negotiations. There won't be any action taken. And we won't be coming back into session.